Can reconvene our meeting to open session. The Board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss a pending legal matter, disciplinary matters, and a contractual matter. If we could all stamp the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could start with introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Will O'Beir.
Wendy Sampson.
Christine Beck.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Meredith Moriarty.
Chris Meyer.
Jonathan Fishbein.
And Judy Kehoe.
Next on the agenda is our approval of the minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the August 12th, 2020, regular board meeting.
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Next on our agenda is our presentation on the 2020-2021 budget impact based on state aid reductions by Judy Kehoe.
Mind your way, Judy.
No, that's fine. Brittany's going to put it on the big screen there in presentation mode, so it should be available to everybody. There has been a whole lot of media attention going on over the last few weeks about aid reductions, so we thought it would be helpful to do a quick overview for everybody. We are glad that we can focus on our mission because it kind of keeps us going towards the North Star here when we're swirling with all of the changes that we're looking at. So, about a week and a half ago, we received an aid payment in June that was reduced by 20%. We had expected to have a 20% reduction when we had adopted the budget, and we expected that that was going to come out of our foundation aid. We had planned for about a $2.6 million reduction. We thought we were being conservative. We increased it up to $3 million, and we made the decision to fund that shortfall with a charge to fund balance. Knowing that this aid reduction happened in June unexpectedly, it actually went to another aid category outside of our foundation aid. So, that's... We still don't know whether it's delayed or whether it's not coming at all. The state is indicating that it is dependent on whether or not they get federal aid. But if it's coming out of all aid categories, of course, that is a much greater impact to our budget, and it would be closer to $6 million. There's other uncertainty swirling around that because there have been some discussions that Questar has made us available, or shared with us, where they have talked with SED, where they're looking at other changes in the formulas. They were talking about if an aid payment had a statutory due date, they would withhold the 20%, but if there was no statutory due date, they would withhold 100% of the amount. So, there's all sorts of formulas swirling around, but that number could be closer to $8 million. So, it's significant, and we don't know yet what that will look like. The next slide shows what we had estimated for our state aid. On the far right column, you can see the reduction in the $3 million, which is what we estimated, lowering our aid to 26.1. We still have no idea what that final number will be. But what is breaking news for us is that the actual aid in 1920 is lower by about $150,000 in that other aid items line item. So, you can see we were pretty close with our projections for all of the aid categories except for those other miscellaneous aids. On the next slide, the terms that we've listed here, we've all seen before from the prior years of reduction. So, whether the state is calling it the DRA, the Deficit Reduction Assessment, gap elimination adjustment, they've got all sorts of different ways of referring to it. But at the end of the day, it really doesn't matter what they call it or what formulas they use. We will receive what they are able to remit to us. So, we have quite a bit of uncertainty in that regard. The DOB is supposed to provide a detailed plan to school districts that will lay out what this will look like, hopefully answer some of these questions, and that's not due until the end of the month. So, until then, we'll really just keep an eye on it and wait and see what the impacts are. We just got word that another aid payment is due in next week, and that too will also have the 20% withholding. So, that in and of itself isn't shocking. All of their local governments have had reductions in their aid around that amount too, but it is significant to our bottom line. One of the other things, if you go to the next slide, that has been bandied about in the media are some changes in state laws that are designed to give some more budget flexibility for school districts. One of them is to allow you to take a loan against your own funds by drawing on your reserves via a loan to cover your COVID costs.
Why is it via a loan? I'm confused. Like, do you have to?
You have to pay back the restricted reserves. So, when all of those reserves were created, whether it was the ERS reserve, TRS reserve, the money went in, and by law is supposed to be used for the stated purposes. So, their cash flow flexibility is saying you can tap into it while you're having a financial hardship, but you need to pay it back.
And with interest.
With interest, with a reasonable interest rate.
Did they give you a timeline for how long that should take, or?
You know, I don't remember seeing a timeline in it. But I think as long as it's outstanding, you have to pay the interest. So, I think the ultimate question will be how long are we potentially in a bind via cash flow? So, the bottom bullet relates to bond anticipation notes, which is short-term financing. So, what they did there was they said, "Ooh, if you're having problems making your debt service payments, you can extend your term. Right now, it's limited to five years, and this new law lets you move that out to seven years." But those notes are all held by third parties, whether they're underwriting firms or banks or whatever. So, that may help you one year to the next in your budget, but ultimately, it's going to cost the district and ultimately taxpayers more money because you're just extending the amount of time that you have to pay interest on. So, these are tools, but I would say we would have to be in a much different place were we to want to take advantage of these. We have a few other higher priority or higher benefit options available to us before we would get into this component. So, if you go to the next slide, this shows you what our actual unaudited fund balance and reserve amounts are as of June 30th, which is what we had put out there at the last board meeting with the exception of the second line from the bottom. The undesignated portion of our fund balance is at $3.8 million, and that is down largely based on that state aid reduction of about $150,000. So, that lowers that number to 3.68%. Typically, we try to have that up closer to 4%, which is our maximum amount. So, it's lower, but it's still within a healthy range. But it is different than what we had covered at the last meeting. So, lastly, I don't want you to think that there's cause for fiscal panic in the district by any means, but these prospects of the aid reductions are certainly concerning, and especially if it goes on longer than one year. We entered this year in pretty strong financial position, so I think we're able to weather these reductions at least into the coming year. And depending on the magnitude of where we land with it will really determine what other actions we may have to take ultimately. So, in the meantime, we're continuing to conserve cash. Whenever we are in a period of fiscal uncertainty, we hold off on expenditures that are not essential. If we have any vacancies, we'll leave those unfilled as long as we can. There are certain project-based expenditures, for instance, in O&amp;M that we're holding off on until we have a better sense of what our ultimate financial hit will be. We can tap into the reserves that we have for the stated purposes, so that with board approval ultimately becomes a source of funds for us. And if we get really in a pinch, we can look at those loans from the reserves. And we also have that fund balance. Even though it's below the 4%, down to 3.68%, that is a place that we can tap into as well for short-term impacts. So, not great news, but we still don't have answers to all the questions, so.
Judy, can you just address how we're tracking our COVID expenses and how FEMA may or may not support any of that?
Another source of great unknowns. So, we've been tracking our costs since this started back in March. We have set up a whole system to track these costs so that we can report them into FEMA. FEMA has yet to issue their guidance on what exactly is covered or not covered. So, we're spending an awful lot of money on personal protective equipment. So, we've got probably at least $250,000 spent thus far and more items on order. We're probably going to be looking at, as the year goes by, $700,000 or more in PPE costs. So, if FEMA covers that, that is great news for us because they reimburse us at 75%. But we don't know exactly what they're going to cover. As I think I had mentioned at an earlier meeting, they don't... They're not used to dealing with these types of emergencies. They're used to hurricanes and tornadoes, property damage type things. So, the costs are significant. I'm hoping they step up in that regard, but it realistically won't be at least until another few months before we know what that's going to look like.
And we've also, because of having to offer virtual only, we've also had to add staff for those. And I don't know if that would be something... I mean, we're tracking it, but I'm not sure if that would be covered under FEMA. But I think it's about five or six positions at this point, which is, if those go on all year, that's a significant dollar amount as well.
Right. So, they're going into that special general ledger code to track them. And I hope for some aid. I mean, we're not the only ones who are dealing with that. This is something that all schools are grappling with.
Judy, I'm a little confused about what would be a loan and what wouldn't. So, for example, if we took money from the undesignated fund balance, is that a loan?
No.
Or is that...?
But you're spending your savings.
Okay. So, what... So, if we took something out of, say, employee benefits, to pay for employee benefits, would that also not be a loan?
That is not a loan. That is using the reserve for its intended legal purpose.
But if we used it, say, for example, to pay for PPE, then it would be a loan?
Correct. Any PPE or COVID-related expenditures that come out of those reserves is a loan.
Thank you.
Judy, I have two questions. The $8 million that you estimated for withholds on statutory... Expenses that had statutory due dates, is that on top of the 5.8%? Or does it raise our estimate?
No, it raises.
Okay. And then, the other question was that for the whole fiscal year? Or was that for the first quarter?
The $8 million?
Yes.
Hopefully, the whole fiscal year. Again, we don't know yet.
Yeah, so...
For us, everything you got.
Right. Well, so that, I mean, that was my question. Division of Budget, as I understand it, at least for other industries, has said the 20% withhold is good for this first quarter, at which point the withhold could increase or decrease, or anything could happen. Do we have a different message for schools, or is that consistent with what you've heard?
At the end of the day, all we've heard is 20%. The 20% has expanded from just foundation aid now to all aid categories. Rumor discussions about changing the formula to that statutory, non-statutory due date category. So, if that happens, that's where you balloon up to about the $8 million. The state changes their formulas all the time on state aid, so that's why I had the slide up there about it doesn't matter what we're calling it. If they're not paying it to us, they're not paying it to us. When we went through this the last time with the deficit reduction, we were looking at anywhere from between maybe $2 and $4 million a year in withheld aid. And that was a period of about five years that we were dealing with that. So, we just don't know until they tell us what it's going to look like.
Question for you. In terms of reimbursements, the food service staff has been doing an amazing job with providing meals for so many kids and families. Is there any chance we could get reimbursements for some of that?
Oh, yes. So, that, Alisa Izer, our director, has applied for all of the necessary waivers and program approvals. So, in fact, she was just telling me yesterday, there is talk about increasing the reimbursement rate for the meals because they're just so critical for our families, up to the highest possible rate. So, as opposed to the distinction between free and reduced, the free rate is the highest reimbursement, so that might be coming our way.
And that would be, would that be from the state or the federal government?
It's largely the state. There's a little piece that's considered a pass-through, but primarily New York State.
Is that statutory?
I don't know.
Because if it's not statutory, they could withhold it.
They could. I would say the odds are probably lower just based on what we've seen from the importance. I mean, that was the one thing that was mandated right out of the gates for us, was to provide meals to the community. So, I would be very surprised if they cut that source of funding off.
Thank you.
I like certainty, and I don't have any to give you right now.
Any other questions for Judy? Thank you. Next on our agenda are our meeting reports, and first up is our superintendent's report. Sure, thank you. I first wanted to turn it over to Dave Hurst just to give everyone an update on the number of kids we have participating in virtual only versus onsite. And then, also just to quickly discuss an update on some of our curriculum updates regarding race and sexual harassment.
Okay, thank you. So, to date, we have 581 students that have elected for virtual only. That comes to 265 at the elementary level. And for that cohort of students, we've created a virtual learning academy, which we have 13 teachers dedicated to this, plus some special education providers, an ENL teacher part-time pushing into the program. So, it's essentially going to be running like a sixth building. In fact, it's... Would be the third-largest building if we were to sort of categorize it that way. So, we have very healthy numbers there. We have staff that, the last two days, they've been doing nonstop planning and PD. Today, they went through about six hours worth of PD that they requested after yesterday sitting down and working through schedules and, you know, just the logistics of being set up. We have them housed. All of the teachers are going to be housed in our LMC here at the high school, where Laurel Jones will be able to be in there to oversee that. We have a support staff also helping sort of with some of the clerical work. They have a dedicated phone line. So, we truly are trying to create a completely separate community for these students and their families so that they feel a sense of belonging because we did bring together all of the students from all five buildings into this one program. So, we felt that it was very important that as we mixed the students to develop as much of a sense of community as we could, so that they developed their own identity. We created a logo for the program to kind of give it some branding. I mean, we really are trying to give it its own sort of feel. At the middle school, we have 126 students that have elected for virtual only, 32 at the sixth grade, 57 at the seventh grade, and 37 at the eighth grade. So, the seventh grade is almost double either sixth or eighth. And then, the high school, ninth grade is 38, 10th is 53, 11th is 59, and 12th is 40. So, the two bookends are smaller, and the two in the middle are a little bit larger. But overall, I mean, the balance from grade level to grade level is fairly close, which obviously helped in our planning. It did help reduce capacity at the high school and the middle school, which allowed us to do some things that we originally weren't sure we were going to be able to do. So, for instance, at the high school, we are going to be able to have our Excel students in grades nine and 10. They will be able to attend every day, which, as you know, this is a program for students that, you know, struggle academically. We have extra supports built in for them. We added a tutorial last year to the ninth grade, and this year, we're adding to the 10th grade. So, those students will be able to come in every day and take full advantage of that, which we think is, you know, really, really important for that group of students. That's above and beyond the ENL students and special education students that we'd already identified prior to the process as being in every day. So, you know, those are the numbers to date. They've held, you know, very steady. We've had a few new families enroll in the district within the last few days that have elected remote, but outside of that, it's been... You know, the families are very good about completing the waiver on time so that we're able to do proper planning and really put together what we think is especially the K5 model. You know, I haven't heard of any other districts in the area doing a model quite as sort of in-depth as the one that we're doing. So, we're very proud of the model that we're proposing.
You want to just update on the...
Yes.
What we're thinking to...
So, the summer curriculum work has been well underway. We're very fortunate in terms of, for sort of what we're considering, our culturally responsive teaching. We have been able to work with... Harriet's been working very closely with our English department and social studies department in some of the planning. We're still, you know, in the very infant stages of this work, but they've also, at the same time, they've made quite progress, right? So, the four areas that they're really looking at are the curriculum itself, and I'll give some highlights in a second in each area. So, just this idea of sensitivity of language. And this is something that Harriet really brought to the forefront that, for instance, you know, eliminating the read aloud of the N-word is something that Harriet's very passionate about and gave great research as to the rationale behind that. So, she's just working with teachers to understand things like that. So, we're doing a lot more training in PD both through Harriet, and we're also looking at utilizing someone named Cornelius Minor from Teachers College, who they're the ones that develop our elementary and middle school program. So, we're working with them. And then, also interdisciplinary opportunities. So, just to highlight a few things. So, for the curriculum, in terms of reading curriculum, we're adding, you know, several new titles across different grade levels to include major works written by diverse authors. And it's interesting, this is an area that... We're very fortunate. Harriet was an English teacher, then she was a building principal before she began this work. So, she brings a lot of credibility to her work with our teachers. And like some of the texts that they initially pulled out, she's like, "Yeah, those are... They're great because they're written by, say, a black author, but it's actually not written very well." So, she's getting them to understand that it's not just about selecting titles that might check off the boxes, but really being thoughtful about selecting titles that are at the appropriate reading level and, you know, are appropriate works of literature, not just for the fact that they sort of check off the different equity boxes. So, we're sort of very happy about that. So, this year, in the English department, they're essentially choosing a variety of titles and sort of using this as a pilot year. Because we don't want to say like, "These are the books we're going to use, and we're going to use these, you know, moving forward forever." So, different teachers are going to try different texts, and they're going to kind of discuss and see which ones works, which ones didn't through the course of the year, and they'll work with Harriet on that. We've added a bunch of titles to the elementary series for social studies. Similar idea, looking at getting away from, you know, solely relying on the textbook in terms of being, presenting the information. Really looking at, are there external sources outside of the textbook that allow us to look at different perspectives on different topics involving race, gender, identity? So, I think the one thing I do want to highlight is the interdisciplinary piece. And this is, I think, you know, goes back to the spirit of why the lab school was developed, was to sort of pilot programs that could eventually be developed throughout the entire school. So, we have our lab school social studies and English teacher this summer put together a project where they're really looking at anti-racist topics and themes through both literature and the US history and government curriculum. So, they're going to be diving deeply into slavery. They're going to be working through the 1619 Project, reading excerpts from Stamped, Racism, Anti-Racism, and U, and so forth. So, just really looking at an interdisciplinary approach to this, which hopefully that'll generate ideas that can then be spread to the overall school. So, I do, sort of thinking ahead, knowing that this work is just starting, I was thinking that typically in October, I give my academic update. Well, given that we had, I have no sort of state testing results, no Regents exam results, there's really none of... There's nothing to report, right? So, I was thinking it'd be a valuable use of that time to have I would... Andy and Nick would be here representing social studies and English, and they'd be able to give you, you know, much more detail on how things are progressing in terms of what they've actually been able to do the first few months of school. And I was also going to invite Fred Powers and Kristen Connor to talk more about the movement we've made in terms of increasing our curriculum in sexual harassment, consent, sexual abuse, and those areas. They've done a ton of work over the summer, really integrating across health, PE, facts, our social-emotional curriculum. They've put together a lot of great new units across those areas. And for me to try to summarize that in this little piece would not do it justice, so I'm going to ask them to come and give all of that in much more detail and allow you to ask them questions because, I mean, while they're providing me with all of the information, they're much more intimate with the details than I am.
I think that's a...
And I wanted to give you an update.
Yeah. I think that's a great idea. Are you able, I'm just curious, to share any of the literature that they're considering?
I do have more of the... It's on the elementary side of things than the high school. And I lost my... I lost my page where it was on... It was a separate document, somehow I lost it.
Okay. Sorry. Next meeting.
Can I ask two quick questions?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I know. First, in terms of the virtual, if you are a special ed student doing virtual learning, are all your services going to be online or like, pretty like, PTOT? Like, how would that work?
Yep. So, they would still be online. Really, it's more that's where the parent has to be involved, and the therapists will be working sort of jointly with the student and the parent, where the parent typically has to help the student do the manipulations that the therapist is asking to make sure that they're being done correctly. It's really not unlike what happened in March. But we do have a dedic... Not dedicated, but we have scheduled in the program a speech-language pathologist, PTOT, and ENL services. So, the students that require services will get the full range of services. They just won't be, yeah, in person.
Do you know, not to cut in, but do you know what percentage of the 581 are identified students?
Not offhand, but it's... If I had to guess, it's in line with the numbers of the overall population, so 10%-ish.
Sorry.
My other question, I'm really interested in some of the stuff that you're doing with racial equity. I'm a social studies teacher, and you know, there's so much stuff going on, you know, over the past three months, Black Lives Matter, George Floyd. How do we... How do we help teachers to be able to talk about these? Because I'm sure there's some teachers that would feel wildly uncomfortable talking about it, and how do we encourage them? I'm sure there's teachers that would feel super comfortable talking about it and might go further than, you know, kids are comfortable with. So, how do we?
Yeah. And that's one of the reasons we're working with Harriet again, is she's very good at working with teachers to reach that, as comfortable a level as they can reach, right? Just in the short time that we worked with her last year, I know the teachers that worked with her felt much more at ease being able to discuss any difficult topic. She just had a really, I don't know, down-to-earth way of letting you know that, you know, you're better off having these difficult conversations and completely butchering them than you are just ignoring them. Because students definitely notice when you ignore things, right? They're much more appreciative when you try to intercede and step in and provide advice, even if you aren't necessarily 100% successful in doing so. Because it just shows that level of caring. And then, the more teachers, I guess, hear that message and are sort of given the okay to make mistakes, the more apt they are to do that. I know the teachers that went through the trainings last year have said that they're still struggling with... I know the teachers that went through the trainings last year have said that, that they're still struggling with doing it, but they're much more apt to do it because they kind of hear her voice in the back of their head. But it's, yeah, ongoing training and it's, it's always going to be difficult for sure.
Dave, I have another question. So the anti-racist stuff is all going to be in the lab school only or is this going to be across all?
I was just highlighting one unit.
Oh, that's just one unit?
I think stood out from the, in terms of interdisciplinary.
Okay. But all the teachers are going to have access to, you know, picking new things for their?
Oh, for sure, yeah. I mean, there's, like I said, I think it's more appropriate for Nick and Andy, but there's, I mean, every unit, if there's 15 items in there, every single one of those units has three to four new ones.
Right, right. Because like, you know, because it's going to go like across all the 11th grade that is American lit, it's going to be every American lit teacher, which there's probably five or six different teachers.
So I mean, one sort of, sort of baseline at the high school level is that every course is required to include at least one major work written by a diverse author. And that's not to say they won't do more, but that's just kind of the starting point.
You mentioned the PD that the Virtual Learning Academy teachers were doing. Can you speak to some of the professional development that the middle school and high school teachers are doing in order to be able to manage the AB split?
We did a two-day summer boot camp like we typically do. And this year, given that it was done virtually, our attendance went up quite a bit. I was, in years past, we'd have 50 to 60 teachers attend. This year, we had closer to 100. And I think that's because, you know, in the past, if you, if you saw on the program, you know, there was maybe only one session that you wanted to attend, depending on where you live, you may or may not want to drive here for an hour session, right? But virtually, we had a lot of teachers take advantage of just one session here, one session there, because they were able to just do it from the comfort of their home. We also made all of the sessions available, we recorded them all, so teachers could watch them on demand. So we had huge response to that. These past two days, our tech coaches have, so we have four at the middle school, three at the high school, plus we have our tech integration specialist who's housed at the middle, high school. They had sessions running nonstop throughout the day. Departments were working within their meetings. We'll have more next week before the students arrive, but there's been, you know, there's been a ton of PD available to teachers. And they, just walking around today seeing them, they've been very appreciative.
In the event that things go so well in the fall and numbers stay down and there's no mandatory closures, et cetera, do we have spaces as a Plan B for 581 students to return to campus?
Yes, I mean, so the middle and high school is easy because they're all already scheduled into the classes. And that, so that part works out. The elementary, depending on, because again, we sort of are telling families that they can only return at the 10-week marks. So if all 265 decided they wanted to go back to in-person in November, then those 13 teachers, I mean, we'd have to reshuffle things around. But yes, they, there's, there's room, but we'd have to obviously take the 13 teachers that are dedicated to the program and put them back in the different buildings and reshuffle things around a little bit.
And I'm sorry?
And we had them originally accounted for in the buildings, K-6. So our plan was everyone was onsite, K-6, but that, we had to offer a virtual. The biggest challenge, and people may not like it, is that kids may be going to very different places. It might mean classes that are currently in session get shuffled around.
Because we collapsed, I think it was, five sections across the buildings.
So would the plan be for them to stay with their cohorts from what would be the five buildings, keep their teacher and all go to one place, or we would shuffle them all back into the general population?
Well, they don't have to be shuffled because we don't have, yeah, those, those virtual numbers are higher in some cases.
I have a question, Dave. So did the English and social studies supervisors reach out to like the teachers to see if they had some, oop, sorry, literature already incorporated into their curriculum? Okay, so they did that. And then the other thing, I was talking to a student who's going to Skidmore and he was taking a playwright class and the teacher decided to change the curriculum to all black playwrights for the year to do something different. Have we ever thought about maybe like for, like a senior or junior elective English course to do like black literature, maybe look and see if that's something that would be of interest? Like I know my son's taking Race in America as his freshman seminar. So I was just wondering if that was something that maybe we were thinking about incorporating or trying out to see if there would be an interest in that type of coursework?
I mean, we do have our, our race course at the high school, which is very popular. And that really is, that almost is an interdisciplinary course. So that's an area where an increase could be made. I don't know that we would necessarily have the need for another standalone course, because I think that course is probably the appropriate place to do it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, just, thank you, Dave, for all your work on this. I know setting up the Virtual Learning Academy was a huge ask. I did want to ask you though regarding the schedule for the K through five. I know we talked about the potential schedule and it almost mirroring the typical day in the sense that it, it lasted from around nine to two. And I have concerns about that schedule working for our youngest learners, K through two, because I did have two kids who were involved, who were doing virtual learning over the spring, who were in kindergarten and second grade. I feel like I do have an insight in what that feels like to a kindergartner. It can be very hard for kindergartners to be on a Zoom meeting for more than a half an hour.
So there wouldn't be.
Okay, that's what I want to assure of.
Well, I think for K-1, 2, if I remember correctly, it's 20 minutes of the session length.
Okay.
So they'll be on for 20 minutes. So for an example, they might be on for 20 minutes for the full class morning meeting. Then one group of students would be on for, so the classes are all going to be broken into, K-2 lab, they're all broken into thirds. So a third of the students would be on for like 20 minutes, a third will be doing an independent activity in ELA and then the other third will be doing another independent activity. And then they'll kind of rotate through those three stations. And then you'll come back and do a whole group math lesson and they'll rotate through three stations. Then there'll be some other activities in the afternoon. So there'll be a kind of constant bouncing on and off throughout the day. So, I mean, the total time is two to two and a half hours worth of actual online where you're, you're live with the teacher, which in talking with other districts, we're actually kind of on the lower end. Again, the challenge is students that age aren't independent enough where they'd be able to learn material on their own either. So there's that definite balance of, you know, so there's that definite balance of how much independent work can you give them versus how much do they actually need the teacher that are directing them? So, you know, the schedule we have week one might not be the schedule we have week two. And I, I mean, we're going to certainly adjust things as the program moves along. If things aren't working, we'll tweak them to make them better.
Right, that's, that's what I wanted to hear because I want parents also to know that they can talk with the teachers and say, what is working for their individual child and feel that they have some control over that. That if a child is really struggling and not able to do what is being asked of them, you know, at those younger years, I want to make sure that our teachers know that they have the flexibility to work with the parent to see what, what can work for that particular child.
Another thing we did build in is we built in office hours every day for students and parents to make contact with teachers. So that could be sort of homework help, it could be just parents needing time to check in. So we did build in a sort of a communication vehicle every day where parents and students have the opportunity to meet one-on-one with the teacher.
Right.
One of the things though, I think that some parents were confused about, and maybe it's because of the way the model was in the spring, is we are responsible for making sure kids are getting appropriate instruction and we're responsible for daily attendance and making sure that we're meeting minimum requirements. So a parent can certainly express concerns and things, but ultimately, they can't kind of pick and choose, I only want my child on 30 minutes a day, because then we're not meeting our obligations for educating their child either. So, you know, I think there were some, some parents, at least early on, who thought that they were going to kind of create their own schedule and that just doesn't work.
Right, but if a schedule is not working for a child, we want our families to be able to talk to the teacher and see what, what they can do to make that work.
Right, absolutely.
To satisfy our obligations, but also take into account the individual needs because this is not the ideal situation for five and six-year-olds. And I really, I love the idea that this Virtual Learning Academy is going to be a sixth school. I love that. What are our plans, however, if a child is in-person and then has to move into the virtual, into virtual learning? I understand we can't just shove them into a pre-established class. So what is their learning going to look like? Are they going to have any contact with a teacher? Are we going to be evaluating them in any way? Like, how is that going to work?
Yeah, I guess, under what condition would they be thrown?
Oh, say, you know, a child has been doing in-person learning and then, you know, someone gets sick or something and they decide they need to do virtual for the rest of the semester?
Yeah, so, I mean, we, we do have some capacity at some, at a couple of the grade levels if an emergency arose like that. But most likely, they'd be doing pretty much asynchronous. We would have to set them up with sort of pre-recorded, in essence, we'd have to have them sign up for something like Khan Academy, where then they would send us weekly updates. And they could utilize iReady as well, which at least that way, that gives us an assessment of where they are. That is not an ideal situation for sure.
Are you talking elementary level or are you just talking?
Elementary.
Elementary level.
Middle and high school is easy because basically, I mean, if you're here every other day versus not here at all, you still follow that same model. You're still in a class, you're still live streaming, it's not a difference. But if you're elementary and all of a sudden you need to be out for an extended period of time, you know, we're not live streaming elementary lessons. But at the same time, for you to just jump into the academy, you're not going to know any of those students or the teachers either. And they might not even be in the same place curricularly as your teacher because not everyone's necessarily in the same exact place, especially in like science and social studies where, you know, science in particular, where we're sharing kits, they rotate through which ones you're doing. Yeah, I mean, we know that, we know this is going to come up, we're going to have to make arrangements.
Yeah, we would try to integrate them into the online academy though, I would imagine. I mean, I'm just going back to having a sick kid in ninth grade where she was out of school for a while. And even if they're a little bit behind or ahead or wherever from being in-person versus going to an online format, it's still better than what we got when she was homesick for three months. So, I mean, I hope that we can find a way to integrate them into an online setting if that were to be the case. Somebody, I think a parent would probably be able to get them caught up if it was like kindergarten, first grade, I would hope.
Any other questions?
Okay, and then I wanted to bring up this topic of athletics because I think there's a lot of misinformation out there. And I thought I'd put together a few slides. So I think there's, you know, a lot of, I know we received a lot of emails and many of them think the governor gave the okay, let's go ahead with it. And I'm not sure everyone realizes that there's a state association, a section association, a league association, and then down to the district level. So this past week, superintendents provided feedback to Section 2. That was due actually Tuesday to them. The NISPA is the state association who said that they would come out with guidance by Friday. And I'm hoping that that's either in combination with the Department of Health or Department of Health has indicated they have updated guidance because school districts in our reopening plan were told to follow the Department of Health guidance and State Ed guidance. So right now, the only thing we have is the governor, who on August 15th said that some sports could resume as of September 21st. So until we have further guidance, we don't really know what that looks like. So what the governor had said is that some competitions could begin. He indicated tennis, cross-country, field hockey, soccer and swimming could begin. Practice in competitions, practice only potentially for high-risk sports, which are considered football, cheerleading and volleyball. And then local decisions has to follow the CDC guidance, which is also the DOH guidance, which is what I just indicated we're still waiting for. So some of the sports classifications, this is from New York State, are identified as low-risk. Cross-country tennis, which they identify as singles only, swimming and bowling, which is not a fall sport. Moderate risk are baseball, softball, doubles tennis, gymnastics. Again, not all of these are fall sports, field hockey, swimming, soccer and other track and field. And the high-risk sports are football, wrestling, hockey, cheerleading, lacrosse and volleyball. So some of what the confusion is, I think, or some of the frustration is that the current DOH guidance for schools reopening talk about six feet social distancing in all classrooms and buildings, minimizing cohorts, masks are required, no sharing of materials or if materials are shared, they require disinfection after use or between cohorts. For some areas such as PE, choir and band, the Department of Health requires 12 feet social distancing, both indoors and out, with masks. Locker rooms are not permitted to be used, no visitors are allowed unless there's a health or safety risk. And travel competition is considered high-risk for Centers for Disease Control. And this is from the CDC and they don't identify any specific sports. How they categorize their, this is from their U-Sports, is you have lower risk to higher risk. And you can see that skill-building, team practices are lower risk, within-team competition, so this would be our students playing among themselves, competition with teams from your area, which would be the local capital region, and then full competition from different areas. So you see they go from low-risk to high-risk, but they don't identify specific sports because they take into account cohort mixing and travel. So some of the things that we have in place for our reopening is we don't have any after-school time. So after-school help, all the clubs, based on DOH guidance, is virtual, all clubs are virtual. And to begin the year, no choir or music or band, I should say, really, because of the 12-foot distancing when playing or singing or wind instruments. The other concern is obviously transportation and putting, we have to currently socially distance for our transportation. Students are on the same bus in the morning, same bus every day after school, we're not allowed to vary from that. We do have a bus driver shortage. I think every district, I'm not saying anything new, that's a fact. We currently have no late buses for academics or extracurricular. And the other concern that I know has been raised is we have for seven through 12 students, an alternating day schedule. So not all students are present. And I know that that's a concern with if you are a student who doesn't have a means to get to school for practice or competition, that essentially could eliminate you from participating in games or practices. The New York State Education Department did indicate that transportation may be provided, but districts are not required to provide transportation for interscholastic athletics. So that was just recently released. I think that's the last slide. So that's what I wanted to share in that we currently don't have guidance. Hopefully, we'll have some from the Department of Health and the State Athletic Association by Friday. And these are some of the conflicting pieces of information that we have currently from DOH for our, or what's included as part of our reopening plan. So I wanted to.
Sure, just first, we got a bunch of emails. Some of them stated that all other suburban districts have agreed to do sports. In your conversations with our superintendents, is that true? Have they all signed off on it?
No, the superintendents are waiting for additional guidance. Without the guidance, you don't know what the parameters are to have a reopening plan with athletics.
So like, no school in the suburban council at this moment has a plan to go forward with sports? They're talking about it, there's lots of discussions, but there's no suburban that has a sheet of paper that says this is how we're going to do sports?
No, not to my knowledge. Not to my knowledge.
No, because like, I'm a sports guy, I love sports, you know, that's what I do. And I want, I want all of these sports to occur. It would be awesome for all of these to occur. I would encourage them to occur, but I just have so many, so many concerns, like all the ones that you brought up. You know, as a school board, like, I feel my number one job is to make sure these kids are safe. You know, these kids come here, and at a minimum, we should send them back to mom and dad. No worse for wear, you know? And I have, I do have worries. I have worries about this, you know? We get emails throughout the year about, you know, well, is this safe or is this safe? And I don't know. In this case, I don't, I don't know if it is. I want it to be. You know, some of my neighbors are seniors in high school and they play football. And I want them to play football. I feel awful that they couldn't, but I also can't look them in the eye and say it's going to be safe. I also like, you know, as a sports guy, I always feel, you know, sports always get favored, you know? And I try and push that off. But in this case, they are. You know, if you're, if you're a theater kid, you're being told no. If you're a chorus kid, you're being told no. But for sports, it's a yes. And I just feel that that's, it's tough. It's tough to reconcile that. The travel part really worries me. You know, how do we, how do we travel from one school to another? Well, we can carpool. We heard from parents that they would carpool, but that scares me because you're putting six kids in a car who probably, you know, are in different groups in school all day. And now we're mixing, maybe mixing kids in a car, which I don't like. I'm just, I just have a lot of worries. I hope that the DOH and Section Two and people can come out with a plan that makes sense and we can, we can pull this off. That would be awesome. But it just, there's just so many things that are up in the air. It's, I'm being asked to say yes to something when I don't know 80% of the answers.
But we're not being asked to say yes to anything right now.
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
I'm just sharing what, there is misinformation out there.
Yeah, but I'm saying that I think there's, there's a real concern amongst parents, based on the emails that we got, that somehow, you know, we're going to shut it all down or we're going to say yes or no at this moment. And no school has any plan on how to do this. They can say they want to do it, but they have no plan. So to say yes to something without a plan is just, it's not responsible.
Well, we also need to have a plan. It would be part of our reopening plan. Because if you recall in the current guidance, it had said that sports are not allowed. And then they essentially, DOH, added in, basically the communication the governor gave in a press conference about this was allowed, but there is no further guidance regarding, from DOH, about that. So that's what we're waiting for.
Because I mean, I understand why we're getting these emails. I mean, these kids, they love sports. It's their passion, you know? Some of the kids, they come to school because of, because they play a sport, you know? It's what keeps them going. But, you know, we also have a responsibility to make sure that they're safe. You know, and the one last thing that I worry about is this, is we got a lot of emails saying that they did a club or a private sport over the summer and it worked out great. And I understand that, you know? My son did a, you know, baseball camp and stuff like that, I get it. But it's different now because in the summer you were spending taking your kid to camp and then you were taking him home, in a camp home. But in this, you're taking him, him or her, sorry, to school and then to sports. And then next day they're going right back into school with kids that, you know, may not, that aren't doing sports. And you're mixing it in with that population. And it just, that's a concern of mine.
Jody, sorry. Can I also just, I feel like I need to distinguish between the ability to practice a sport and have a coach assigned and have some activities going on associated with sports as compared to competing, practicing, traveling, putting kids in a bus, mixing school districts? Because I think that, and I understand that the push is for all of the latter piece of that, but I think that the guidance, as minimal as it is, could allow students to at least practice and condition. So when you are having internal discussions and cross-district discussions, is it just focused on the practicing, competing piece of it? Or can we, at some point, think about, can students condition and practice consistent with the guidance where they're apart from one another and they're outside and they're just individually working on skills?
Well, currently, I think the conflicting piece of it is with PE, for example. It says 12-foot distancing. It doesn't say, it doesn't delineate between inside or outside. So what kind of practice can you do with 12-foot distancing? You know, so that's where it's a little unclear. Does this mean we don't have to? Does it mean if you're six foot, you have to wear a mask while you're practicing? I don't know. That's where some of the confusion is. You know, if you're not to share materials, how are you throwing a ball back and forth? You know? Are you supposed to be disinfecting athletic equipment? Because that's what the guidance is for PE.
Yeah, I just, and I don't have the answers.
Yeah.
I just, I just wanted to be clear that there, there could be a distinguished.
Oh, sure.
A line between.
Yes.
Sure, come and do soccer drills without interacting with one another versus get on a bus and go play tennis.
Well, I think that's kind of what the CDC, that little diagram, was intending to do. That here's, you know, some of the low-risk going to high-risk based on that individual practice, practicing with another person, things like that. But I mean, obviously that's very generic, but I think that was the kind of the intent of that. And that guidance is, I think relatively old, maybe July or something was, I don't know that that's been updated since.
Yeah.
And I suppose along the same lines, you could also do something different between varsity and JV.
Right.
Like, I mean.
Right, there, I know some schools are talking about only doing varsity if, if we're moving forward. Some are talking about just varsity and JV. So there's a wide range. And some of that is financial pieces. Some of it is schedule, some of it is transportation. So, you know, everyone's got different reasons, you know? Judy presented on the finances. And I think we're well aware of some of the other local school districts who are making drastic reductions because of that. So that could be a piece for them.
Sorry, the one thing I forgot to say, I apologize, I was really, on my little list here of notes. I, I think we can pull off sports like golf, tennis, cross-country. Like, I think, like, this isn't like, we can't do any sports. I think we reasonably.
Those are the lower risks.
Yes, like, we can reasonably pull those off. It's just the gray area it gets to when you get to field hockey, soccer. You know, how do you minimize risk on a soccer field when two people are going for the same soccer ball? How do, how do we, how do we keep those kids safe? You know, and football, I mean, that's even more questions, you know? How, how can I look a parent in the face and say, as a school board member, I, I'm keeping your kids safe to the best of my ability?
And it's, it's not just those kids playing, right? It's the 600 families that made the heart-wrenching decision to keep their kids home because they didn't think they were safe in school without athletics and districts intermingling on buses to go play competitions, right? And so where, where is the line? And how fair is it to families who now are accommodating children at home and remote learning? And what, what impact does it have for everybody, not just the kids playing? It's incredibly complicated.
I also worry about, I also worry about our teachers who are, you know, maybe we're comfortable coming back and teaching with the plan that we had. And I don't know if, you know, what the response would be if now there's a lot more movement taking place.
It's adding risk.
It's adding risk.
But there's also the kids that don't play sports that we're here to protect as well. And so I think Chris's point is, over the summer, the kids were playing sports. I think it was a great point that they're going to the activity, the event, they're going home. Or maybe they're traveling, maybe they're doing some travel stuff, but they're not coming to school. They're not putting other kids at risk. And I know other states don't have some of those sports considered low-risk. But New York does, which was interesting to me because I think there's a lot of other states that categorize them differently. And I'm for the low risk. If we have the ability to do it, I think there's a short window. I mean, they're talking the 21st. And so whatever we do is going to have to be done rapidly. It's a lot of scheduling. It would be a lot of preparation. I would think it would be very difficult to pull that all off. And I had a son who didn't get to play varsity in the spring and he was upset by it and devastated. So, you know, I understand how these parents feel or the kids feel because I lived it. But I also have a son at school who can't go in another dorm building and they can barely interact with people outside of their dorm room. So they're doing all that at a college level and then they're not even playing sports at college level. I mean, their whole season has been canceled. So it's going to be up to the district to decide ultimately, once all those decisions come down from every venue and to decide what we want to do. And I just think it would be hard to justify doing anything other than low-risk sports, which it breaks my heart to say that. I understand the kids, it's good for their mental health. I play tennis, I'm out playing tennis. So I understand that it's important to be out there active and playing sports. So it's, it's a hard decision. But I think we have to make the decision for the entire school. It has to be well-thought-out. It'll be great to get some guidance, but ultimately, you know, we might not have enough buses drivers. We're limiting travel. And I just, I think it's going to be a tough decision when we, when we finally make the decision.
One of the things I just, I want to make sure that we keep in mind is, you know, and I, I get, I didn't need the, you know, the 100 emails to remind me. I knew how important sports are to the kids. And, you know, they, they're passionate about it. It's what gets them to come to school. But you can say the same thing for the kids that are musicians and the kids that are actors and the kids that are artists. And all of those kids are missing their co-curricular activity as well. And I just, I think we need to be really careful because if we're going to allow, you know, a low-risk sport like golf, tennis, cross-country, something, even something like that to go ahead, we need to be mindful of whether we're also allowing opportunities for, for our, our other kids to do things that would be equally low-risk. Such as, you know, I'm not talking about a full musical in the parking lot, but, you know, to practice. But to, I mean, there's, to practice a, you know, a play outside or a way to, you know, do art or music. All of those things are just as important to those kids as sports are to our athletes. And I just, I don't want to forget that and lose sight of that.
Well, it's funny you should say that because we have a student, Jack Mastriani, who's a senior at University of Michigan, which is the top, like, musical theater program in the country. And they do the senior entrance. And they were all outside socially distancing, but their whole season has been canceled. Which is, you know, heartbreaking for the top musical theater program and Broadway's closed. But I understand your point, like, if they could do that opening scene socially distanced, I would like to see us try to, on top of everything else we're doing, try to make activities in-person socially distancing, even if it's not sports-related. Because the mental health issues, I think, are really important. I know I'm struggling sometimes at home to be, you know, socially distanced. And I, I think it's really hard for the kids right now. And anything that we can do, whether it's sports or otherwise, whether they're, you know, singing 12 feet apart in the parking lot, I, I think that would be great.
And, and that would also be dependent on if we can add after-school transportation, right? I mean, because all this stuff is going to happen after school. And you're going to disadvantage kids who can't get a ride home. If we don't want them, you know, if we don't want one parent picking up six kids. I just, you know, I don't know how we can make it fair for everybody.
We'd have to find.
We've already said there's no clubs, everything's got to be done virtual, so.
Well, that's based on the guidance we have. If that guidance were to be adjusted or we, I mean, I think if we do after-school activities, we have to find a way to track kids somehow because of the whole contact tracing piece. We have to make sure that we're able to account for everybody. The transportation pieces, yeah, it's a challenge. And like I said, it's not just us. Every district is struggling with it. You know, we have, we currently, just to get kids to and from school, we're a driver short right now.
But I also, I want to say the fair, the fairness. I'm all for fairness, believe me. My whole life I wished things were fair. But I don't want to penalize somebody, like, let's say tennis can go forward. I shouldn't use that because I play tennis, but cross-country. I don't want to say you can't do that because the guidance says you can't do something else. I think that's not right either.
I agree. I agree. Like, it just, and you know, this kind of came up because there were early discussions about sports and there were some conversations that what if only these sports can go forward and others can't? And there were some, I think, sentiment and from different people that if all sports can't go, then none should. And I, I don't, I don't agree with that. I think that kids have lost a lot of opportunities. We all know that co-curricular activities, sports, theater, art, music are incredibly important aspects of school for kids. So what we can offer, I think we should, even if it means there are some things that we can't.
Yep, and we make the best of it because that's life.
Yeah.
Well, I'm hoping that the guidance we get on Friday.
Or today, that we're supposed to get?
Yes. Will illuminate some of these issues and maybe solve particularly that the 12-foot PE one. Because I wrestle, that's wrapping my mind around that.
I know the PE staff were not thrilled when they asked me if the guidance for them has changed. And I told them it had not.
Yeah. Buying a lot of jump ropes. Ultimate frisbee becomes part of the PE.
Lot of yoga.
Can't share equipment, so you can't play frisbee.
Right.
Just like, you can't use a locker room, so swimming may be, you know, inconsequential as far as the low risk, but.
Yeah, nobody wants to get sweaty and not be able to clean up.
Right, and then, you know, swimming, you're, you know, is the pool material?
Going places in wet bathing suits is going to be impossible in cold weather, which is coming up.
So we are also working really closely with our school physician. Obviously, he plays a big part in this. He has to be, he's the one who signs off on kids being able to play sports. I know Joanne Menref had a, and I had a call with him today. He works closely with our athletic department. He is on some state association related to athletics. So he's pretty in tune to all of this. And I would say he's equally frustrated that we have not received some guidance about all of these things. Because he has a lot of questions as well.
Even if we could go to sport, have some sports, he's required to clear all the kids. How long is it going to take him to clear those kids?
Yeah, I think that's a concern of all the school physicians because of the timing. You know, everything has been delayed, sign-ups. And we did automate our process this year, but ultimately, it has to go through our school nurses. It has to go through their physicians, through our school physicians. So we may have to, depending on what sports move forward, how many kids are involved, we might have to prioritize, you know? Varsity level gets first priority for medical clearance and so on. That's, or it might just be a delay.
And normally it takes, I understand, the whole month of August to go through this.
It takes, yeah.
In a normal season.
It takes quite a while.
So hypothetically, if we were going to go full bore, and I don't see that happening, but if we were, would be, what, the end of October?
Yeah. It would, yeah, it usually takes a good, solid month. But again, with less sports, less numbers, that would make that a little more manageable. But he does have some concerns about just the timing of everything.
Can you mention swimming too? Like, the other thing is, right now, we're not allowed to have visitors in the building. So, and we don't have lockers. So how could we even have swimming?
Right.
Because nobody's allowed to come in the building. And so that's going to limit a lot of things.
The school physician, he, he actually was concerned about swimming, particularly because of the ventilation, the humidity.
Yep.
And I think that, at least for youth sports, for swimming, you are in the pool, you swim, you get out, you put a mask on. But if you have any numbers in a swim area, and he, he said, you know, I've had six kids, all swimmers, competitive swimmers. He said that he's very concerned about just the ventilation piece in an indoor environment for swimming.
One more thing. It's just my opinion, but I just, I would just ask this, that like, Jody, I'd ask that like, we wait for the guidance and we get the guidance. And then just, once again, just for me, you know, when you meet with the superintendents, have a good faith effort to see how we can make this happen. I mean, well, let's see if we can.
Right.
You know, and if the cards play out that we can, that's great.
You know, and if the cards play out that we can, that's great. I, I, I want kids to have opportunities. I want seniors to have their varsity fall season, you know? You know, those kids have been playing sports, you know, since they were four and five years old. And I want them to have that opportunity. Um, so if we can, that's great. But if they, but if we can't, then, you know, if the superintendents could come together and have that conversation, it's just going to be very tricky if we have, you know, those mixed elements.
Right.
Some people say yes, some people say no. Like, just having that conversation across the whole council and figuring out what's best for the kids and how can we pull it off.
And I think there's probably going to be a, um, a little inconsistency anyhow just because some schools are saying financially, they can't do it. Some schools are saying, I'm using my gym as classrooms or lunch spaces. So how am I supposed to use it for volleyball, let's say? Um, and, and we have different gyms, but some schools are not in the situation we are. Um, so, and some sports schools have indicated that they would only consider a varsity level only. So I think there will be some disparity anyhow. Um, but I think, I agree. I think trying to be as consistent as possible is helpful. And it also, you know, you want to, if you're going to have competitions with other schools, you need other schools to compete against.
Thank you.
So that's my update and hopefully that helps clarify, I think, some, at least in the emails, it sounded like there was a lot of misinformation that we received.
No, thank you, hopefully it.
But I do want to thank all of the parents that did write emails. That, I mean, they obviously put a lot of time and thought into sending the emails. But as Holly said, I mean, we're really aware of what it's like and why we should allow sports and, you know, we're trying to do everything we can, but we might not be able to.
We want to keep school open too.
We want to keep school open first, educate the kids first, sports the second.
One question I had is, um, where are we with the tents?
So they were ordered. They are scheduled to arrive around the 14th or 15th of September.
Okay.
Is that still your understanding, Judy?
As far as I know, yes.
How many did we get?
We had two for the high school, I think, one or two for the middle school and one for each elementary school. I don't, maybe the middle school only got one because they have the pavilion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we are, I know Ray has been working on trying to set up some Wi-Fi access in some of those outside areas. I mean, the challenge is that we have kids logging on from home to participate. You can't really do that model outside because you're, you're using these boards to display the kids at home. But if you have activities that work for that, you kids could still use their Chromebooks outside.
Um, any other questions for Jody?
That's it.
Thank you. Um, next up is our board report. And I did just want to say first off that it really is, I know we all have masks on our faces and are sitting apart from each other, but it's nice to see everybody in person. And it was also, I wanted to officially welcome back all of our faculty and staff and, um, not too long from now, our students. Um, and to recognize, we had, uh, 12 employees, uh, celebrating milestones this year. Um, and I wanted to particularly call out, um, Donna Asprey on for her 35 years of service to the district. Um, because it's a, that's a pretty big number. And I know we didn't have our normal, you know, big welcome back in-person day. And I just want to make sure that, uh, that those milestones get recognized. Um, and also to make everyone aware that we have 27, uh, if I counted correctly, new employees, you know, joining the district this year. Um, and I wanted to offer all of them a welcome to Bethlehem. And, uh, lastly, I just wanted to really thank you, Jody, um, and everybody else who's been working on getting us to this point, um, where we are reopening. It has been a, I think it just, it's an understatement to say it's been a monumental task, um, since, over the summer, since March. And I just really wanted to extend our thanks for all the work that you've done.
Thank you.
Um, does anybody have anything else they'd like to share at this point?
One, I was excited to get dressed up and go somewhere. I admit it. I definitely was, dressed up for the occasion. Um, two, thank you, Jody and Dave, for all the work that you've done. I know it's been a very stressful summer and, uh, very appreciative of all that you do. And, uh, I also wanted just to, to wish Mr. Patrick O'Connell good luck in his new job. Um, he took a last-minute position closer to home and he is such a wonderful individual. He's like an absolutely fantastic musician, would play at Fractors, it's a loss to the district. And I was sad to hear that he left, so.
That was it?
And in addition to that, we just found out on Friday that Mr. Kay is retiring at Hammagrail and he told the parents and we're all crushed.
At the end of the year, don't start.
At the start of the year.
Right.
We're all very sad, so I would strongly urge the board to deny his request. Keep him for another five or 10 years, that would be great, so. But I wish him nothing but the best.
Uh, seeing no other comments. Uh, next on our agenda is our public comment. Um, we did, uh, receive some comments, um, coming in through email. Um, as stated, we had a number of comments, um, with, uh, respect to the athletics issue. We had over a hundred emails in support of allowing, uh, fall sports to proceed um, in a variety of different ways, um, which I know everybody, I think, received. Uh, there were two emails, uh, in opposition, um, to allowing fall sports to go ahead uh, for naming safety reasons. And then we did have two other, uh, comments come in. One from Jill Hughes, who asked if, uh, to please share this article and quote with the board. Um, and it's an article from, uh, the Washington Post, uh, which I will send around to everybody. But the quote is, "In addition to academic gains, black students taught by black teachers exhibited better behavioral outcomes. According to 2015 research by Adam C. Wright, a professor of economics at Western Washington University, behavioral assessments of black students in the classroom significantly improve when they have a black teacher rather than a white teacher. Wright found that as black students receive instruction from a greater number of black teachers, the probability of suspension decreases. In a 2017 study, Wright and his team showed that students of color placed with a teacher of color were less likely, less likely to argue or act out than minority students placed with white teachers." Uh, and again, I'll send the link for that article around. And then the, uh, last comment came in from Joan Walters, who writes, "I was wondering if it would be possible to set up a BCHS student drop-off point at Eagle Elementary School. Even though only 50% of the students will be going to school each day, many more parents will be driving and dropping off. And I understand that all students being dropped off are asked to arrive at the same time, 7:45 a.m. All traffic currently has to exit to Delaware Avenue and this backs up through the parking lot. And there are many conflicts with vehicles trying to enter from Delaware Avenue and exit. To help alleviate traffic and separate the traffic arriving from the bypass from traffic arriving from Delaware Avenue, it would be very helpful to use the Eagle Elementary School parking lot as a drop-off point. There is a crosswalk to the north side of the intersection that the students could use to walk over to the high school that would not conflict with turning vehicles. It looks like this area of the Eagle parking lot may be used for bus parking, but I assume that the timing of the high school drop-off would not conflict with bus parking for Eagle. Thank you for considering and for all you are doing to make this school year happen."
So parents actually already do that, some of them? Um, it's a little trick. Um, so they wouldn't conflict with bus parking if someone wanted to drop their child off and turn around in Eagle or something like that? The only thing I would just say is, at that crosswalk, uh, no one stops at it generally. So it would just be mindful that, I mean, they're high school kids, so I assume that they can navigate a crosswalk. But, um, so I think that there are some parents who've already figured that out, that they can avoid the congestion and the students can walk across and get there. But I think that's a viable option. And with all of our drop-off, arrival and dismissal, I think it's hard to know how that's going to go until we actually see the number of parents dropping off. Like, we are trying to get the elementary stagger that time, but we may need to adjust that, uh, a little further. I know, um, at Slingerlands today, they were having Chromebook pickup and the traffic got backed up onto Union Street and three police showed up because neighbors were complaining about the traffic.
Yeah.
Um, and Heidi was a little concerned that this is potentially what it's going to look like every day.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I, I think until we kind of get into the groove of the bus dropping off and the parents dropping off, we are going to have to figure out what's going to work for traffic flow. But sure, that's an option people can take advantage of.
Yeah, I continue to have some concerns about what the middle school is going to look like. Because it's already a.
Yeah.
A tricky parking lot.
Right. So we might have to make some adjustments. So that's the one, you know, area when we're thinking about how that's going to work. It's, I'm not really sure until we actually experience it.
So Holly, you should talk about the book that we're going to read for our retreat, since you picked it out, you and Mer- you and Meredith picked it out.
Oh, well, we'll talk about it at our retreat, but it's, um, if you want to hold it up. Uh, the board is meeting, um, for a board retreat, the end of, um, September. I think it's September 30th, I might have the date wrong.
I think that's right.
Whatever that Wednesday is.
Yep.
Um, and this year for a retreat, um, as you guys know, we decided to read this book that Christine is holding up. It's called Why Are All the Black Kids Sitting Together in the Cafeteria and Other Conversations About Race? Um, it's by Dr. Beverly Tatum, who was a former president of Spelman College and is a psychologist. Um, and one of the reasons that, uh, we focused in on that book in particular is that, um, it really seemed to address a lot of issues that are germane to education in particular. Um, so I'm hoping that, um, everybody takes the time to read through it and that we can have a robust discussion, um, at our meeting.
I originally did read that back in 1997, since the 20th anniver- the 20th anniversary edition. So there's a lot of really new stuff added as well and some other essays are in there. But yeah, it's, it's very timely, so.
And thank you to everybody for, in advance, for taking the time to read it. I would also ask for a public comment from the audience, but I don't think we have anybody here. Unless there is somebody. Nope.
Okay.
Uh, next on our agenda are action items. Uh, A, finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through two.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through 23.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. C, support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through 13.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one and two. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item seven, future meetings and events. Um, our next board meeting is on Wednesday, September 16th at 7:00 p.m., anticipating an executive session, uh, starting at 6:00. Um, Monday, October 5th at 5:30, there is an audit committee meeting. Um, Wednesday, October 7th at 7:00 p.m., there's a regular board meeting, um, anticipating executive session at 6:00. Um, and then the meeting after that is on Wednesday, October 21st at 7:00, um, anticipating an executive session at 6:00. Um, and if we can, we should probably also try to get another policy committee meeting, um, on the calendar.
Yeah, I thought we'd schedule them for the year, like we did last year.
That would be great. Uh, seeing no need to go back into executive session, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.